Good evening. We'll call the Cedar Springs, February 13th school board meeting to order. It's now sitting at 45. And if you would all rise with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Intuitive and very powerful. My foundation under that intended as well. delivery of justice for all.
Thank you. And we can have a roll call for the Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Patton.
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Here.
Treasurer Gellmore.
He is a producer of family illness.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a forum for tonight's meeting. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted. That brings us to gratuities, in a way, open up the table. To share gratitude.
My daughter had fun at Swirl, so I'm grateful, an opportunity for her to know.
I'm thankful for all you women. Some of the only guy on the board right now. And I would thank for all the administration. And all the public.
I know I've shared this in the past, but I just continue to be grateful just for the communication that I see as a parent and just from the different buildings. And I just, I feel like things have gone smoothly this year from the principals and further up. So I just, again, appreciate the communication.
I've attended, well, a lot of people attended, the Red Hawk Hall of Fame where various community members and vast players were inducted, and that was very much appreciated by the families and the players, and the athletic department did a nice job of presenting it.
So I have two things that I am grateful for. First, is this room was filled today with members of the Transportation Department. So they, the team from Dean Transportation, all of the drivers, and other sports staff came over. And Stacy Bosco read "Want You Learn" for their team, where we talked about MTSS practice, or I'm sorry, PBIS practices and how we could incorporate those practices more into the routines on the bus to make it a better experience for both the students and the drivers. So it was just a neat exchange of ideas and information, and it's the first of routine plan that we will have moving forward, where we provide the members of the bus staff or transportation staff with information about how they can better relate and provide a positive experience for their students, while also maintaining their top priority, which is safety when those buses are on the way. And then secondly, I'd just like to thank the team from Beach Elementary School, really starting with Jen Cook. Jen Cook really stepped in and accepted a mighty challenge at the end of August, days away from the start of school, when we asked her to step into that interim principal role. It's often said that it's not always the case that people who are always qualified are called, but it is always the case that those who are also become qualified. And Jen has done an outstanding job, and the team at Beach has done an outstanding job throughout the course of the 2022-2023 school year so far in really just embracing the year with a positive spirit and being fluid and flexible and adjustable as they've worked together to provide a great experience for students and families at Beach. We started the process of looking for a permanent solution for the leadership position at Beach Elementary School back in November, and worked with the staff from Beach to create a position profile, so identifying the key attributes for the individual with whom we were ultimately going to be looking for in that process. And then we opened up the search to internal candidates. We had two internal candidates that we interviewed, and also in cooperation with the team at Beach, we've really, it's become very clear that Jen Cook is really the right person to lead that team moving forward. And so one of the recommendations on the consent agenda this evening is for us to remove the interim label from Jen's title and authorize her to serve as the principal from Beach, at Beach Elementary School. So I'm just grateful for the team at Beach, the just can-do spirit and and the desire to work together to find their way through some pretty foggy, pretty foggy times.
Congratulations, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any high school representatives with us tonight? There we went. Thanks, Sarah.
She's a senior.
Yep. Okay. We'll move past that. That brings us to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Patton.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Consent items are approved as presented. Moving on to discussion, our first item for this evening is multi-tiered systems of support building mid-year reports with Steve Johnson, Jen Haberlin, and building leaders.
So Jen is home with the flu, so it is just Steve Johnson presenting with an expert panel of building supporters. I include, yeah, just me, thank you. Yeah, thank you all for setting aside some time tonight. This will be our winter MTSS Board of Education update. There will be some data shared tonight, but not as much as typical. Tonight, we have some representatives from our buildings who are here really to share some celebrations, and just the small moments of some of the good things that are going on out there in the work that's being done by the folks that are in the building doing the work. So we structured it similarly last winter and felt it was pretty impactful. You can hear those voices. So that's where we are tonight. So we have Jim Davis, who is our major building team leader at Cedar Trails, he actually did part of Teddy Hills also.
He's been in it. But he isn't in our.
I'm sorry. I've only run for ten years.
Good evening. So I am the PBIS coach for Cedar Trails, and I've been in that position, I believe, this is my fifth year. So we've been implementing PBIS for a good four, almost five years, and even through the COVID times, we were still doing PBIS. We have Hawksquacks as our ticket reward system. And when we took a dive into the data in the fall with our Swiss data, we noticed that we were having the most behavioral issues in the classroom setting, and with things that were outside of our safe and kind, which we have kind, safe, responsible, and brave as our school-wide expectations. So we decided to set an extra goal for our kids, and we developed a Golden Hawksquack. This is given out to classes when we see an entire class that is showing us their safe and kind behaviors. And so they get this Golden Hawksquack. We put their classroom teacher name on it, and it goes in a drawing. And every Thursday, we draw out one first grade class and one kindergarten class, and they become the Golden Hawksquack class of the week. So they get this trophy, they have Golden Streamers hanging from their classroom door. They're announced on the announcements, and then they get to carry this as they walk down the hall, and everybody sees that they earned that. So we have seen that the Swiss data has shown a decrease in those behaviors in the classroom. We can't be positive that this is the reason for that, but I do think that because we have this goal, our staff has really wrapped around that idea, and probably addresses it more with their class and gets them pumped up. And just kind of along with that, we are implementing PBIS to fidelity, so part of that is head-in-school by celebrations as well. And we just had a glow stick dance party a couple weeks ago, and that went over really well. Everyone gets to participate, and the kids just absolutely loved it. So just a couple of our celebrations. Any questions?
Thank you.
Those of you that don't know, she also serves on Board of Education for Grand Public Schools, and certainly fully understands your role.
I should make them come up with me. So we had time to look over some of the stakeholder data, and we were really excited to share that parents and stakeholders felt that students at Beach, those students have at least one staff member that would know if something was different or wrong. So it was done in 2019, and it was 19%, and it's increased to 82% this year. So super excited about that. 54% of the stakeholders feel their child is successful at school. 68% of the stakeholders feel staff at Beach encourage academic success. We've had great success within the PBIS with check-in and check-out for some of our struggling students, so they go to Clarence's office or Athena, who's our behavior interventionist, and check in with them, and they kind of talk about like, how was your morning? What's going on? Kind of take gauge their temperature for the day and kind of put things in place to help make them supportive, be supported more throughout the day. And then they check out at the end of the day when they go home. We also had some great success with reading for iReady. Our students who are at or above grade level went from 26 in the fall, 26% to 48%. Building-wise, yellow decreased from 40 to 35%, and our red, which is more of the average, went from 34% to 18%. With math, at or above went from 8 to 29% for at or above students. Yellow decreased from 58 to 57, and our red decreased from 34 to 15%. We also have monthly celebrations, which one is coming up on Thursday. We're having a glow stick party for our third graders, because they're working on light and sound. And our second graders are working right now on the life cycle, so they're going to do a plant party. So they're going to decorate containers and put plants and seeds for plants in there, so really connecting it to CKLA as well. And we also are still having the students actively involved in announcements to share be safe, be responsible, and be respectful. Any questions? Thank you.
So I will be representing Cedar View. Their celebrations really focus on math. They also saw some significant increases in students who are at or above grade level from the beginning of the year assessment to the middle of the year assessment. Fourth grade saw a 28% increase, and fifth grade saw a 20% increase from September to December, January. And then they also saw a 15% decrease in students who were two grade levels below. So really some good movement and shifting of the data there, and that seems to be partly a result, anyway, of our new math curriculum resource that we're implementing this year and getting training in. The feedback from teachers who are implementing are really saying this is really connecting positively with students. So just some of the quotes from our last data review. My students really enjoy Number Corner, which is a part of the Bridges resource. My students are able to explain their thinking, and then my favorite is my students are starting to see themselves as math practitioners. That really connects with me, because in my years of working with students, I hear, I'm just not good at math. I just don't know how to do math. I don't like math, and changing that, shifting that mindset is really one of the first things that we need to do. So for students to be able to believe in themselves and think they can understand math and do math is really the first step in the process, and we are seeing some of that movement this year. So that's the Cedar View update. The middle level is just wrapping up parent-teacher conferences. So some of the staff there are hoping they can make it over in time to share out. I also will represent the high school, and as I said, you can jump in whenever you feel it's necessary or cut me off. So at the high school, the behavior team there spent a pretty significant amount of time on their own this past summer thinking and brainstorming and just kind of rebooting the behavior expectations at the high school. And so as a result of that, we have students, we're seeing a significant shift in the data based on this new kind of reboot. So the new expectations really, and also the new structure of those half-days on Fridays once a month, has really provided a opportunity for our staff to present those expectations to students, to teach those expectations, and then to reinforce the expectations. And so, you know, what do Hawks do at the high school? They strive, they're optimistic, they're accepting, and they're responsible. So it's sore at the high school Red Hawk state. I talked a little bit about the data, so now we're seeing a much higher proportion of students who are able to identify the behavior expectations and who are reporting feeling acknowledged by staff on a more regular basis. So I think we have our staff who are really, really good job of providing those positive acknowledgements. It's the student's perception of receiving those acknowledgements that is shifting now. And so if they're not perceiving that they're being acknowledged, it's not really making that connection that we would look for in a positive way. So that is a really positive shift at the high school, and with the time that that behavior team put in over the summer, we're really seeing some positive impact. Middle level. So the middle level, a couple of different celebrations that they'd like to share. They have really been working on strengthening and updating their acknowledgement system as well. And so they have started to roll out not just staff-to-student acknowledgements for positive behavior, but they're also adding in a student-to-student acknowledgement. So if a student recognizes that positive behavior in another student, there's a recognition system for that. And then also student-to-staff acknowledgement. So if students recognize that staff are going above and beyond in modeling that really positive behavior, there's a system to set that, or to make those acknowledgements and recognition also. And really, the goal behind the acknowledgement system and the recognition is not necessarily a reward. It's making that positive connection between students and staff, students and students, and just building the culture and a positive climate in our building. So that's really kind of the driving force behind that. On the literacy side, both at the middle level and at the high school, we really have a focus this year on being intentional in the literacy practices that we're using across content areas. So, you know, we think about literacy with English, obviously, with social studies, maybe with science, but also with math. Training teachers and helping teachers to use those best practices in literacy instruction, things like explicit vocabulary. There's lots of vocabulary in math that can be taught pretty explicitly. Using comprehension strategies consistently from classroom to classroom to classroom, so that we know all of our students are receiving a really high level of instruction. And so it's helping to support that guaranteed and viable curriculum by maintaining some consistency in the practices that were, that were aligned there. And then on a district level, as the district MTSS coordinator, I am really thrilled with the progress that we're making in math. I said, or stood up before you in June and said, next fall, we're going to add math to our MTSS systems, and we've done that. On the surface, it may not sound like much, but it really, it really is. You know, locally, I don't know of any other district in the county that has a structured and systematic process for conducting data reviews for math. We focus a lot on reading and literacy. We focus a lot on teaching here, but there really is no structure for math. NISD does not have a structure. There's no structure from MDE that I know of, and so we really had to create it for ourselves. I'm in a group, really a statewide group of MTSS coordinators. We meet virtually about every two or three months. We are always able to share celebrations at the beginning of our meetings, and when I was able to share out what we're doing with math, you know, the highs just kind of went like this. They weren't really even aware of a lot of things that we are doing as far as data analysis goes and having a system. And so it was really, really exciting to share. We are innovating, and we are leading, and it's just really, it's great to see. Thank all the people in this room who helped make that happen and move that forward. Jen Haberlin and Stacy Bosco, too, they're not here, but it's, yeah, it's great to be a part of something that is on the forefront of really, really making positive change. And I can open it up for questions before I leave shares.
Is there a way that, I mean, because that's a lot of data, and I'm thinking this side of the brain, that we could get that? Like, I mean, because it's very impressive. It's very enlightening, and it makes me happy anyways, and it's it's great to see Cedar Springs being innovative like that.
Absolutely, yeah. It's definitely, we went kind of low tech today, but it's definitely, we can something put together pretty quickly. Some of the information, too, is shared under item, let's see, so sorry, under discussion item D.
Okay.
And that's this packet, however, it pales in comparison to the robust collection of information that the team has been pulling.
Yeah. Yeah. So I looked at that, and I just said it was from September of 2022, and.
Yeah, it was beginning of the year and then middle of the year data. And then I'll do an end-of-year data point at the end, but.
Do you think some of it, too, is because we've had, we've been in-person also? Do you think that helps quite a bit?
Well, I think there's always something to be said for, you know, virtual learning versus in-person learning, even, you know, even with trainings that were held virtually when we weren't in session, it's just, it's harder to connect with people. It's just harder to take the content. It's harder to collaborate with others, and you're not there. So I I'm sure that's part of it, yeah.
Well, thank you. I mean, I just, it feels good and perfect.
Okay, so I'm Emily Fiker. I'm the reading coach for, I'm one of the reading coaches for the middle level. So for literacy practices, they've been happening in all four areas. We did a dive, looked at them. What are each content areas, do they literacy-wise, and then we kind of charted those up and those live in the buildings. And then we looked at, okay, what can we do next? How can we support our teachers? The first PD that we had, teachers were able to dive into strategies that they chose. What do they need in their classroom right now? This next PD coming up on the 21st, we looked at the iReady data and noticed that vocab was the lowest domain of all grade levels. So the other reading coach and I have picked strategies that will help teachers, and they can take those strategies from that training and just go straight in their classroom the next day. And then we've also started to build a folder, a digital folder that teachers can go into and dive in and see what more is there for vocab if they want to learn more. And then we're hoping to continue to build on that and just share things out each time. We're looking to reach out to other teachers that are doing great things with their, with their score, who are iReady and in their classrooms, and say, what do you have that people share? So it's not just our team that's always great these days. Behavior-wise, their goal was to reduce the major log entries by 10%. Middle level has reduced by 8%, and Red Hawk has reduced by 3%. Their student-to-student, student-to-staff, student-to-staff acknowledgement tickets with buy-in in both buildings. And those are awesome to see, you know, when the read goes out, when you pull those tickets for those kids to see that they're celebrated. And they're like, ooh, my ticket's strong. So that's, it's a double. They get the ticket, and then they're get to see that extra recognition. So, anyways. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Reddick, thank you, Emily, for scrambling over to we probably have this, we really appreciate it. So what would be the best way to get that information out? Would it be shared with you, Mr. Smith, the compilation of the? I think what we'll have Jen do, we've got a work session coming up in two weeks. Okay. And so I'll have Jen put together kind of a collection of data points. I know we wanted to talk about our approaches to assessment on that evening as well, and so we can share the methodology and approaches to assessment as well as, as well as results. So we'll do that on 27th, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
And email is the best way to get ahold of me if something comes up, questions, you know, later tonight, or then, you know, next week, next month, please feel free to reach me.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving forward, discussion item B, E-Rates category two, request for proposal RFP. And I think we have this.
Mr. Smith. Yes, I am not Jonathan's.
No, I hope.
Jonathan, too, has the team today. Yeah.
Okay.
About 3:00 PM, Jonathan Rachel said he was not feeling well, so I said I would cover for him. So I'm not an expert in IT, but I'll do my best. So recently Jonathan worked with the ISD and a vendor called the Heat Funds to draft several RFPs for some E-Rates technology bids. Really, E-Rates is a federal program related to connectivity and hardware. Essentially, for every dollar that we spend, we will receive a 70% rebate. So it's a very cost-effective program for updating your IT needs. So we had four projects, major projects that we submitted RFPs for. The first one being fiber termination maintenance, additional bandwidth being the second one, network equipment, and battery backup solutions and switches, and then the wireless system support. So the fiber termination maintenance, we had some testing done on our fiber, and the results indicated that we need to do some maintenance on those connections to keep them up to speed and fully functional. I imagine several of you have been at your day job, working when the internet goes down and productivity comes to a halt. So that's a major thing that we're trying to avoid here with this type of maintenance. We received three bids for the fiber termination maintenance. The low bid being turnkey network solutions, and that bid actually came in just in time earlier today, so had to upload a revised presentation further this afternoon. But their bid came in at $21,594.86. So the IT department is recommending that we select turnkey network solutions for the fiber maintenance. They provided. They provided the best price and understanding of the district's need to replace, update, and test all of our connections. The next category was additional bandwidth and Internet service provider. So this is our additional bandwidth that we utilize for our student Chromebooks, guest device connections, and then also esports connectivity. Our current contract is with an entity called Managed Way. We pay a monthly fee for one gigabyte of connectivity. Based on the various bids that we received, it looks like we received four bids, bids for four different vendors. The IT department is recommending, I'm sorry, I'm reading off my, not me, who lies. We had AT&amp;T, PM three, Managed Way and Charter all submitted bids. Based on the bids that were submitted, the IT department is recommending that we go with EM three networks. Their one gigabyte per second option at a price of six hundred and ninety five dollars per month. Our current, we're currently paying Managed Way approximately fifteen hundred dollars a month. So this is approximately half of what we're currently paying. So based on Jonathan did follow up with multiple districts that currently utilize EM three and they are all satisfied pleased with the level of service that they received. So the recommendation is going with EM three networks and the one gigabyte option. Our our next category was related to network equipment. A lot of our equipment is currently approaching a fifteen year, fifteen year mark, that is quite old for IT equipment. We need to place some of our, replace and add few wireless access points as well as network switches and backup batteries for our home systems. And those also provide back, not backup, but protection for a lot of our hardware. If there's a power surge, it protects it, that delicate hardware from being damaged. This also helps with our cybersecurity, having old, out of date systems, but basically vulnerable to those bad actors who are trying to access your system. So there were three projects within this category. The battery backup system, network switches, and wireless access points. Vendor or Vector Technologies was the only vendor to bid on all three of those subcategories. So Jonathan and the IT department are recommending that we award the bid to Vector Technologies. The base bid for the wireless access, the switch connectors and UPS is just under about seventy three thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars. And they also included a alternative, alternate bid to upgrade the wireless access point to a higher level model. That's an additional seven hundred and sixty dollars, which Jonathan recommends we take advantage of. So the total price for their bid is seventy four thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars. And the final category was for a support renewal. Vector was the only one to bid on this category. They provided a one year option and a three year option. Jonathan is recommending that we utilize the three year option at a total cost of seven hundred and nine, seven, seven thousand nine hundred dollars and twenty cents. So the grand total of those four categories, the total cost will be one hundred twelve thousand dollars, five hundred and seventy one dollars and six cents. Now we get a seventy percent discount, so the district expense, all said and done, will be thirty three thousand seven hundred and seventy one dollars and thirty two cents. Any, any questions? Alright, so this will be on the agenda for action later on in the agenda.
Can you repeat the numbers again?
Total cost? One hundred twelve thousand five hundred and seventy one dollars and six cents. And the net cost to the district, thirty three thousand seven hundred seventy one dollars and thirty two cents.
That's some amazing savings.
All right, move forward then with discussion item C, update to in-person continuity of services plan ninety eight C.
I will take that one for Jen. So the, once upon a time, back during this thing called the pandemic, we had to, at the beginning of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year, we put forward and the board gave its nod of approval for a continuity learning plan. And one of the things that that document did was it spelled our approaches to in-person learning, to remote learning. It just clarified some key points in terms of how the district was going to move forward, and in particular, how the district was going to spend some of those federal dollars that are coming through with that SIR funds. And so part of that process is to continually review that data, excuse me, that plan with the board and acknowledge any changes that we've made to that plan over the course of time. So we reviewed it back in September and then we're, I've got it forward for you tonight. Because we did have to make one change to the plan as noted. The original plan had Jeff Revard listed as a member of the Board of Education as a trustee. The revised plan has April listed as a trustee for the Board of Education. But other than that, there's no other changes to that continuity of learning plan. But we still need to go through the process of acknowledging any revisions or any changes that we make to that.
Do you know how long that took?
Through the end of the SIR plans, it's part of the federal grant allocation checks and balances system. So is that twenty twenty four, Marty?
Ninety eight C, our SIR two, so that is, you'll be ninety, probably this year, as we create this virus.
Any questions? Check it out. All right. We'll move forward to discussion item D, ninety eight B, data review.
So this packet of information that's included as a link or as an attachment in Board Book is kind of the the body of the data that Steve Johnson and the teams referenced earlier in the evening. Part of Michigan's integrated continuous improvement process, MICU, is for districts to look at key data points and key indicators of progress for both academic goals, but also for social emotional goals. And so this collection, the progress report that you have in front of you, really is kind of a checkpoint. It's not telling a true story of growth because this is kind of the middle of the road. So it has less significance for us in terms of being able to draw some big conclusions. What it really does is it helps us identify key areas in which we can make some minor adjustments to our instructional practice or to identify key students who may be in need of some additional interventions or some additional supports in their classroom. So what this collection of information is, is really just the, you'll see the beginning of the year or the BOY data points and then the middle of year, MOY data points. And as you can see, there is growth in each of the different categories across the board. It is kind of a wonky document to review. And so, you know, what I did was I took the second page and I layered it over the fourth page. And you can see then where we were, where our pre-K students were, the beginning of the year, where they are now, middle of the year. So for example, our pre-K students in mathematics, we had four students identified as being at benchmark at the beginning of the year. Now, poor, the entire group, we have forty students that are at benchmark. Now, ideally, we are going to want all of our students at benchmark, but, you know, we've got additional time throughout the course of the year to get them there. And so that's kind of the summary of what that document is. It doesn't go into detail like Misty was referencing her question. It's really just a high level document. Now, we use the individualized results from the IREDA scores. And we use the individual information from the unique pieces of assessment or the unique tools that we're using to then make those minor adjustments or make those adjustments in the classroom level and also for interventions. But really, this is more kind of a global, kind of a high level overview. Again, that we have to review in order to be compliant with the SIR, receiving those additional funds for support. So I'll do my best to answer any questions, otherwise we'll leave it to Jen to really bring it home on the twenty seventh. The good thing is we're showing progress in all of the, in all of the categories. But it also shows us, we've got a lot of, you know, we've got a lot of work to do between now and the end of the year.
Any questions? Well, forward to the forthcoming more fun, more information.
Yeah, thank you.
Discussion item P, financial report, Marty Selkman, you're up to bat.
All right, we'll go over this fairly quickly unless you have any questions. It's a pretty finance heavy agenda today. Couple things to highlight on this, later today we have the food service combi oven, RFP, the tabulations and award. And that plays into what we discussed probably back in November, the excess fund balance that we have to spend down in the in the food service. Earlier this month, we did receive notice on a number of grants that we applied for back in October, November timeframe. We did, some of these have been incorporated partially into budget amendment one. I do have thirty one A A budgeted, but not for the full amount. Ninety eight C, have a portion of that budgeted as well. The grants I have listed here, we do have a spending deadline of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty four. These are all state aid, but there's a law that allows you to carry over those state A's for up to twelve months into the next fiscal year. So we have until nine, September thirtieth of next year to fully expend these funds. We still are awaiting the final confirmation for our funding of, for section ninety eight C that we have to use to address learning loss. But based on a webinar that Jen and I attended about a month ago, we're anticipating about one hundred and seventy two thousand dollars being awarded for that that grant. Any questions on any of those awards?
That's a lot of money. Congratulations. It's pretty amazing.
Last week, the governor had released her executive budget proposal pretty favorable for A twelve overall. She's proposing a four hundred and fifty eight dollar increase to our foundation allowance, five percent increase to at risk and increasing the special ed reimbursement rate from seventy five percent of the foundation allowance up to eighty seven point five, so a twelve point five percent increase there, as well as continuing to give reimbursement costs. Kind of on the, something to watch out for for the retirement system, she's proposing a three point one one percent increase to our retirement costs. Some of that may be offset by increased funding to be offset for one of the section one forty seven categoricals. So we pay ORS thirty percent on wages, but then we receive a portion of that back via section one forty seven. So it's something to keep an eye on. Receiving additional foundational allowance, but also our personal costs will be going up with that. And they may or may not fully offset that increase. And then there's a number of supports for students, educators, healthy and safe schools. One thing that you, that there, she's proposed is universal free breakfast and lunch for all students. So kind of going back to where we were during the pandemic. One thing we have to keep an eye on in regards to that is potential impact to our free and reduced applications, which drive our title funding and is the primary driver to our at-risk funding. So fewer families, the families no longer fill out that application because everyone is getting free and reduced. Our numbers will be lower than what they truly are and are, we put the potential loophole on some title and address funds.
So so be back in on that, one of the things that they talked about in our county media or Kent County Supervents Association meeting on Friday morning was rather than, that they would, they would support districts by paying off debt, like food service debt. So at the end of the year, if we had families who owed six thousand dollars, we would submit that number to the state and then they would, they would pay the district to cover the debt of the students. Rather than, you know, free for everyone as they did before, approach it maybe a little differently to try and help, you know, try to make it so that families who needed the support could definitely get the support, but not, you know, I don't know how to put it other than.
They're talking going that way or that's on?
That was one of the discussion points, like an option of how they would approach it, that would be a little different.
You could just have them fill out, fill out the form like we, you know, anywhere for free and reduced lunch. And then after everyone fills out the form, provide them the free lunch, like that's the way to get your free lunches to fill out the form.
Correct, but then some students wouldn't necessarily qualify for the free lunch. But at the end of the year, they have, like they're behind on their account.
Okay.
And so basically the state, we would acknowledge how much we were upside down in our student accounts. And then the state would pay for it. It's just a, no, we're getting a lot of like interesting eyebrows raised. It was just an idea.
Yeah, a lot of things.
Just one, just.
I wasn't in the room, I don't know.
I think it falls in those categories, but sometimes the best intentions have.
Yeah.
As a process that you don't.
Yeah.
So I think there will be people making leadership aware of those potential consequences.
Yeah.
But the intent was to offer the three breakfast and lunch.
Correct, the intent was to help support families who didn't, who needed financial support to feed their kids at school.
When will we know? The process or if that's it?
Hopefully before June period, before we have to. But, I mean, right now. But, I mean, right now, the Democratic Party controls the House, the Senate and the executive branch. So they should be able to come to an agreement on the budget before. Hopefully early, sooner than they have in the past three or four years, past three or four years. We've been adapting budgets, not knowing what the upcoming budget is going to look like.
Where it come on that? Okay.
Stay tuned.
If I recall, I think she mentioned having goal, having it pass May. Time frame, so we hopefully would know.
The other tricky thing is just because they passed the budget, doesn't mean that they've got all the rules in place that we would have to follow to. Take advantage of the budget, so.
Yes, for example, those grants that we just discussed, were part of the budget process and we're just finding out now what our allocations are. So it takes some time.
From last year.
Correct.
And it's February.
So the budget is somewhat of a living document. Found in comment, the series two bond, we continue to move forward on that. We've had the preliminary official statement review and due diligence call was the last day, January thirty first. And then on Wednesday, Scott and I will be participating in a ratings call with S and P Global. And they'll have a, they have a series of questions that we'll go through and respond to and from there we'll receive our bond ratings.
It should be great again.
Yeah. Any questions on the financial report?
All right, moving on to the budget amendment one.
All right. So as I just mentioned, the budget is kind of constantly changing. We're getting new information even now. And as you're aware, we adopted the budget towards the end of June last year, not knowing what the state's budget was going to be. So a lot has changed since then. The first graph is just real quick, kind of history of enrollment. You'll notice we, back in nineteen twenty school year, we topped out at three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven FTEs. We have since declined three hundred and eighty FTEs down to three thousand one hundred and ninety-seven. That's approximately a eleven percent decrease over the last four years. That's going to be some of a trend that we discuss tonight as we kind of look forward into next school year as well. Foundation allowance has continued to go up, which is going in a positive trend and. As I mentioned earlier, it potentially will increase another four hundred and fifty-eight dollars for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, so what changed since June? So back in June, I projected fall enrollment of three hundred, or three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven FTEs. Our actual enrollment came in at thirty-one ninety. Our state aid membership was projected to be thirty-two seventy-eight. Our actual is thirty-one ninety-six point five four. So we projected to be down fifty, we ended up being down a hundred and thirty. I'm working with Kami to put together some data to try to figure out where all these students have gone. But I, I, I read a recent article in Nationwide that. I want to say it was eight hundred thousand students that did cross the nation, districts just don't know where they've gone. Since the pandemic started, they've kind of disappeared and stopped responding to districts. So I want to work with Kami to get a better understanding of where have these students gone? Are they school of choice students? Are they Cedar residents? So we can get a better understanding of when will we level out and hopefully start to go back up. Pretty close on our initial projections for the per pupil increase, I projected a four hundred and thirty-five dollar increase per pupil. Ended up being four fifty. And then there were some other additional changes to state aid. Some decreases related to the decrease enrollment that were also offset by some increases to special ed at risk and retirement funding. But the big picture is we are up just under nine hundred thousand. But that is because we are drawing down our SIR funds faster than we originally had planned on to make up for those lost FTEs. And this graph kind of demonstrates for state aid, we're down a net amount of fifty-four thousand dollars. What you can see here, the federal revenues are up nine hundred and twenty-two thousand. So the federal grants work is if I budget, I, I have a million dollars available. If I budget five hundred dollars worth of, five hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses, I'm going to recognize five hundred thousand dollars of revenue. They, they always net to zero. So in this case, I had an additional, I budgeted an additional nine hundred twenty-two thousand dollars of SIR funds to cover. To essentially balance the budget. So that is why that number, that nine hundred thousand dollars is such a large increase compared to what was originally budgeted. Any questions so far?
Your hand.
So as I mentioned, state aid had a net decrease of fifty-four thousand dollars. The categories that categoricals that increased were our master retirement funds, thirty-one A at risk. There's the new categorical thirty-one A A that we can use for school sites, social workers, counselors and nurses. We're receiving some additional special ed transportation funds. And then the educator recruitment grant that we received are decreased, again relates to. The decrease, decline in enrollment. So a net amount, net decrease of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand. So our per pupil foundational allowance decreased, but that was partially offset by an increase to the special ed. And the new section fifty-one E, which is also special ed funding. Federal revenues is up nine hundred and twenty-two thousand. As I mentioned, this is primarily related to SIR. Increasing our spend down of our SIR funds. And then we also did receive some additional allocations for health resource advocate grants and the I E E. I D E A preschool and the A R P I E, I D E A funding. And we had minimal decreases to these other federal grants. And then a, a minimal change to our incoming transfers. Some increased funding coming from that being passed through the ISD. Back in November, when we discussed the excess fund balance from food service, originally we had sixty thousand dollars. Being transferred from food service to general funds for kind of overhead costs. We concluded we didn't want to do that, so I removed it from the budget. So that's a sixty thousand dollar decrease there. So if you look overall at where our funding is coming, on the left is the original budget, on the right is the amended, the biggest change. In the original budget, state funding was just under seventy-six percent of our overall funding and federal is six or eight point six. Under the amended budget, the federal had me jumped up to eleven percent and the state declined down to seventy-four percent of our total funding. Then we'll go through the budget line categories, each one. I only made commentary for the most part, it was the change of fifty thousand dollars or more, but there's a couple that. Are new, but I wanted to highlight those just real quick as well. So basic programming, programs that had a net decrease of three hundred and ten thousand. That decrease is primarily driven by personnel saving via resignations and reassignments. So obviously it's somebody, we had a number of teachers outside of just the retirements that we knew of. They resigned to different positions at other school districts. We fill those positions with newer staff and generally speaking, newer staff. The net cost is, it's a net savings to the district. So we had a number of those instances and then we just also, as I said, reassigned them to different budget categories that we'll discuss later. A, a big decrease also related to the amount that we budgeted for substitute teachers. We had spent a lot of money on substitute teachers the past three years during COVID. You know, with all the quarantining that we had to follow. We had to have subs at the ready, ready to go, just to continue operating, operating. We have since been able to scale back significantly. That's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollar decrease from what we originally budgeted. We did add two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to added needs. We added one new certified staff member and replast one point one FTEs from basic programming programs to added needs. We've also added seven FTE positions to this category. And then we had one resource room teacher that we moved from added needs to instructional support staff. This is a new category that we did not originally have on. The original budget, so it's continuing adult slash continuing education. So what this twenty-one thousand dollars relates to is. We applied for a, a number of grow your own grants. And essentially, three, three of our staff members were awarded those funds. This covered the cost to, for them to obtain additional certifications, to be certified teachers. They submitted their tuition books to us, we paid them and then the state reimbursed us to the two, twenty-one thousand dollars. So this was, this is a new category. So that's the only reason I really included it on there for you. Pupils support increased. We added district-wide nursing, OT and the school assistance program. That's the.
Red Hawks care.
Red Hawks care. We've also added two speech paths and then they've also changed their benefit elections somewhat. I have free interns, school site interns, had recess aids and also started. Compensating harbor, harbor circle for lower elementary school council. We've always used them, but they've been able to bill Medicaid, Medicaid. So now they're doing some additional work that's not available. So now we pay them, are paying them a little bit. But this is something that would be thirty-one A A eligible. And then we have a open school, we decreased the budget by a hundred and three thousand, we have open school social worker position that. It appears unlikely that we will fill this school year. My instructional support staff increased three hundred thousand. We did have to purchase quite a, a, a fair amount of supplies related to the new math curriculum. These are, this won't be an annual ongoing expenditure, but it's one of those expenses that kind of get all the teachers. Up to speed and fully equipped to implement that new curriculum. We do have also added a math teacher coach. Again, that will be funded via section ninety-eight C, that learning loss grants that we're still waiting on our final number for. Any, any questions so far? Skip over general administration, school administration, the largest change to this was each administration. So as Scott alluded to, the week before school started, we put. In place Jen Cook as the interim principal and brought on Clarence as the interim dean, uh, dean of students. The interim dean of students. So I obviously had a building administrator budgeted, but I did not have. The dean of students built into the original budget. So that's the largest portion of that, two hundred and forty thousand dollar increase. Business services increased a hundred and thirty-four thousand. The biggest change on this. The, the plan back in June was for Matt Andres to take on both the accounting, a lot of course of the accounting role as well as payroll. As you're aware, he is now the director of finance at Greenville Public Schools. So we had to make a bit of a pivot there. So we brought on Kerry Duddles as a point eight FTE to be our payroll specialist. And we have now hired William Cox as the new district accountant. And William will be working side by side with Natalie through June thirtieth. And Natalie will be kind of getting him fully up to speed on. Everything that goes into the district accounting and sharing her twenty-seven years of experience with them. Operations. So this is by, by far the largest change in the budget. And this is driven by the, our change in direction with our custodial services. So effective December thirty-first, we, we, the terminate, the contract with GRBS. Aspired and we brought on the facility cares team. So for half of the year, that was an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. We did also have to purchase significant amount of custodial equipment, floor scrubbers. Custodial supplies. We also had the two new maintenance trucks that we originally ordered back in October of twenty-one, I believe. And we weren't sure when they were going to come in, but they did come in until July or time frame. So they ended up hitting this fiscal year's budget. And then the decrease is the removing six months of the GRBS contract. Now, something that played into the, our, our decision, we knew the GRBS contract was originally going to aspire June thirtieth. We knew there was going to be a significant increase to that contract if, if we went out to bed. So bringing it in-house is a significant increase, but we were going to experience a significant increase. July first, two thousand point three regardless.
I have just a quick question on that, but that'll level out, correct? I mean, we're seeing increase substantially. Increase expenditure now, but.
Yes, it, it, it will, it will probably end up being hundred. And we did go to the Fed, so I don't have the numbers, but my estimate would be being, bringing it in-house is probably a hundred thousand dollars more expensive. But we control. You know, the, we get to run it as we see the, and respond to.
We'll be paying more for custodial services.
But we'll also have a significant and better quality product. The, what we were paying before was an artificially low number. And the quality of service we were giving was not meeting the needs that we had. As an organization. There was really twofold, one, recognition of a required bulk in additional hours of service. To tend to the tasks at hand, but also an acknowledgement that. There were other changes that needed to be made within us, the systems approach. To make sure that we were having the people who were on the team doing the right things to get the greatest return on that investment.
Transportation that increased. Essentially, we did at the start of the school year, we had added additional routes. Plus a McKinney Bento and at-risk after-school transportation. Since then, Jerry has reduced it back by one. And then some decreases, we adjusted the sped transportation, sped transportation costs. And then I trimmed back our projected diesel expenditures. It seemed to be trending in the. Right direction. So overall expenditures have increased slightly over two million dollars, bringing our total. General fund budget to forty-six million fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Our total ESSR COVID-related. Expenditures are currently budgeted at three million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That would leave us a remaining balance for next year of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Between ESSR two and ESSR three. Or I'm sorry, ESSR three and ESSR three eleven T. But question marks next to ESSR three, section ninety-eight C. I don't think we'll be getting that back. As well as this ARP IDA preschool. Those again are COVID-related. Hopefully we'll have that for one, one more year, but that's about a hundred thousand dollars. Any questions?
Missed the fund balance slide?
We're gonna, that, that's on the next.
Okay.
Next one. But it brings it, this brings us to about an estimated fund balance of roughly twenty-five percent. All right, jump right into the initial discussion of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. All right, so. That in January, there was what's called the consensus revenue estimating conference, we hold that multiple, multiple times throughout the year to. Bring together economists and state legislators to discuss the economic forecast. And then measure where they, where we are trending compared to what they originally had projected. So the January ZERAC painted a very, quite a favorable economic forecast and currently the school aid fund is at historic. Continues to be at historic a lot of this. So it is. Pretty, as I said, a favorable forecast for school districts. One concern, they did discuss the potential for a slight recession, but. So it'll obviously be something to keep an eye on. We kind of already covered the governor's second budget earlier. And I've also mentioned all of our ESSR three funds have to be fully expensed by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. And as I mentioned, we will have significantly less ESSR money to spend next fiscal year than we have this year. So right now, I think our current enrollment trend is, is concerning. As I mentioned earlier, we've seen an overall decrease of three hundred and eighty FTEs since the nineteen-twenty school year. So that's something we're keeping an eye on. Are we, have we bottomed out? Are we gonna start going back up or are we still going down? We need to keep up.
And one interesting thing, when you look at enrollment across the district, our class sizes. In grades eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve are in that two hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy-five. Students per class range. When you go to A seven, our class sizes drop to two fifteen. To two hundred and twenty-five students on average per class. And so there's clearly this pocket of students that are, that are missing. From, from the equation, and I think some of that can be definitely attributed to trends for declining birth rates. In Kent County, that was predicted back when we did the early. Look at bonding or doing a bond project, you know, there was, that was definitely included in the projections that. Birth rates in, in Kent County, particularly in northern Kent County, were going, natural birth rates were going to be on the decline. But the other, you know, we've definitely been impacted as have other districts, you know, in, in our neighborhood. To this other decline in students, that's really difficult to put a finger on. But it's, it's really. Targeted that A through seven grade band more so than secondary.
Okay, so again, this is just the enrollment history that we looked at again, ten point six percent decrease. Since nineteen twenty. So this is just kind of a standing history. And if you look at this, you know, enrollment's going down and our staff is going up and you probably are asking, why is that? Well, it is deliberate. You know, during the pandemic, we maintained low class sizes. That addressed a number of concerns, you know, spacing in the class and also more. Lower class size, more interaction between the students and the, the staff. What we did do is we added a lot of the support and intervention staff. And really, that is what the ESSR funds were intended for, to help. Catch some of these students up to, you know. Miss instruction, help bring them back up to speed. But this trend isn't something that we can maintain when our ESSR funds are going down or disappearing and. If our enrollment continues to go down. And this number doesn't include the custodial staff that we added January one. As well, so this number is actually higher. But I wanted to have a better comparison to previous years. So here's our fund balance history. As you can see, based on budget amendment one, we are projecting to. Be right at about twenty-five, just over twenty-five percent fund balance. This graph over here is our total fund balance amount and the line indicates our, the addition. The surplus worth deficit. So over the past six years, we've added a little over seven million dollars to our fund balance. So we do have a very healthy fund balance currently that will help us get through some of these potentially difficulties. It will help us navigate some of these issues that we're discussing right now. So this graph really was designed to show the impact that the ESSR and the COVID grants had on our fund balance. Going back to the twenty twenty-one school year, we had had one-time grants of one point five million. Then last year, we had three point one million. This year, three point six five million dollars. And this top line shows our change in fund balance for the audit financial statements. This one is our projected for twenty-two, twenty-three. This green line indicates what our change would have been had we not had those one-time grants. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, had we not had that three point one million dollars, we would have run a deficit of two point four million dollars. This year, we would have a deficit of three point six million. And then these last three are kind of some multiple scenarios for next year. And we'll be kind of seeking some guidance from you as how you would like us to approach this. The, the first scenario is no one retires. And we just have, continue as is. Everyone gets their step. And these are preliminary numbers, I haven't included everything, everything that. All the increases that we have, but this is just to kind of get an initial vis- visual. Assuming the four hundred and fifty dollar increase in plan enrollment. So if we did nothing. For next year, we would be running an approximately one point four million dollar deficit with that one-time funding. If we didn't have any of that funding, we'd be two point four million dollar deficit. This next one is, all right, let's say we have ten retirements and we replace all ten. Again, it gets a little bit better, where instead of the one point four million dollar deficit, we're at eight hundred and sixty-two thousand. And then this last column represents, okay, we have those ten retirements. And we also visit class sizes. So right now, we are, for the majority of our class sizes, we are under the contractual limit. So can we get a little bit closer to those contractual class sizes? So this one is looking at, all right, maybe we were selective about replacing those retirements and we. Take a look at class sizes and bringing them back up to more of the known. So this one kind of breaks down our revenue and expenses over the last. Two years plus budgetment one and then also those three scenarios. So back in twenty twenty-one. Our revenue was broken down between general operating, reoccurring grants and one-time grants. So you can see. You know, in twenty twenty-one, we had just over the one point five. Last year, three, three point one million and then this year for budget number one, three point six. But you can still see where our revenues are essentially. Equal to our expenditures. Go over to this next, the, the fourth column though, that's the no retirement scenario. We are now running this gap between the line and the, the top of this column. That's our, that's the deficit we're running. The, the fifth column, that deficit gets a little bit, a little bit smaller and then the final. Column shows, all right, we can almost balance that budget based on assumptions that I've worked in. If we are selective about the retirees that we replace and visit class sizes. And this is just a projected fund balance. Under those three scenarios, so under the one, it would drop down to twenty, twenty-one point seven six, twenty-three percent and. On the final, we're staying at twenty-five, point six seven. And again, this is the, the fund balance in dollar amounts. So I, I, I think, you know, I was kind of picturing a red, yellow, green light as far as, you know, you're. On my way to work, I'm approaching, I'm on Norton Drive, approaching M fifty-seven. I know, I know the light's going to be changing, but I don't know exactly when. I know there's a lot of other people coming. Pro, you know, crossing Norton Drive and they're thinking the same thing. Do I kind of hit the gas and just keep going? Do I kind of slow down? Or do I stink slam on the, on the brakes and kind of stop it? We're kind of looking for a little bit of guidance from you as far as what's your level of comfort? Under those three scenarios. We, as I mentioned, we've added significant fund balance to. Significant addition to our fund balance over the last five or six years. Are we comfortable using some of that fund balance or is it the goal to maintain it as is?
I think it's important to use student classes low, the class numbers low. I think that's what we're always striving to do is have lower class sizes, so.
I think it's there for if we need it, right? The fund balance, I mean. It sounds like we may need it, which is okay. My question is, you know, you're, we're looking at these projections and. Is this sustainable as we move forward? Is this something that we're going to have to do every single year that keeps chipping away at the fund balance?
Right, yes. I mean, we, we've got, we've got basically right now a one point six million dollar gap between. Our revenues, about forty-five million and our expenditures, you know, forty, forty-six. Forty-six, five. So we've got. In, i- if we have been. If, if we have been having a conversation around enrollment in February of twenty twenty. I would have expected us to be looking at thirty-seven to thirty-eight hundred students right now. Based on our trajectory from the previous years. And so because there are so many unknowns regarding enrollment, you know, we've got a new. Development going in, in Cedar Springs. We also know that the housing market. Is pretty tight right now in Cedar Springs. There's not a lot available for families who are looking to move this way. And so I can't say with confidence that we are going to. Solve this revenue problem by increasing enrollment. I don't think. I, I can't, I, I, I'm not confident that the enrollment growth. That we. Could see in the forecast would completely address the revenue gaps that we've got. You know, so to my point, do we, do we lock up the brakes and. Address the gap by cutting one point six million dollars in, in expenditures, which we could do. Do we keep our foot off the, off the brake, maybe take it off the accelerator? We don't. We're very mindful of additional expenditures and, you know, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year until we get a better. Sense of where, you know, is this the year that our enrollment kind of stabilizes and turns around? You know, maybe not, maybe not do any increases to program, but maintain our program where we are and, and. You know, maybe not, maybe not do any increases to program, but maintain our program where we are and, and, you know, make up that gap with our fund balance, um, knowing that if our, and our revenues don't turn around in twenty three, twenty four, we're going to have to have some serious conversations and make some serious, um, targeted reductions in terms of program, uh, for twenty four, twenty five. Because to your point, we cannot continue at this level of, uh, gap between our revenues and our expenditures. Or we could take kind of a middle of the road approach and, you know, instead of taking one point six million out of program, which would mean, you know, it making a significant difference to supports, uh, making a, a difference to class sizes. You know, do we take half of that out of program with some, uh, maybe some targeted, uh, if, you know, if we get, if, uh, if we get, certain retirees, if, if we see some ways to, uh, reduce some aspects of our program, but still not dramatically in decrease the amount of services that we're able to provide for students. So maybe, you know, right now our kindergarten class size, I think, is fifteen in some classes.
I think they're, some are fourteen.
Yeah, that's really low. You know, so maybe it's eighteen. You know, be very targeted in terms of those types of adjustments. And use the twenty three, twenty four school year as a year in which we can, you know, pump the brakes, not slam on the brakes. If, if our enrollment doesn't turn around, we are going to have to make some really difficult decisions around staffing and program.
I'm the kind of person that likes to plan for the worst. So right now the trend is, it's going down.
Yeah.
I mean, I see that in, in the slides that you presented.
And because of that, I mean, I, I wouldn't lean toward, I don't, I don't think it's wise to continue as we're going now. I think we have to at least pump the brakes.
I tend to agree on that. I, it just, and like we're seeing the trend going down. And if that's the way it's going to continue for a couple of years yet, we can't sustain what we're doing.
Right.
Again, so I'd be inclined to, you know, just bump it to some degree, but, you know, I, I like, Shannon, what you said, you know, I'm, I'm all in favor of having the sports against me. But we need to be mindful of how we can maintain that.
Oh, sure.
And, and hearing those numbers is even helpful too, because that, I mean, that is significantly like half, you know, half of.
Because what's the contractual for kindergarten? Is that twenty three?
I have to look.
Twenty three, yeah.
It's eighteen.
Oh, great.
Eighteen is contractual?
For kindergarten, okay.
You have to live along with the, the drive.
But that's not going to make up the difference that we need them. I think we need to think a little bit. We gotta slim our baseline, right? We have to think about this, maybe able it and think about where we can cut some costs. That's what do we need and what don't we?
Right.
And I hate to lose that, you know?
And that's what we'll do. Like we'll, we'll put together some different proposals and then bring it to you because you've got full time jobs. But there are some things that we can do strategically, um, and really, you know, maybe it's not a polar vortex hiring freeze, but it's a, you know, risk wind out of the north where we look strategically at, at any new proposals. You know, and maybe we push pause on some of those, uh, new positions that we were looking at. A- as one way to help make sure that we're not, you know, adding additional costs to the program. My experience has been that we would be able to, um, identify through some very, uh, strategic, very surgical, uh, reductions to the budget that we can, we can find eight hundred thousand dollars and not have a significant impact on the program. If we had to cut one point six million dollars, it, it would be noticeable.
So kind of that yellow light is where you're, where you're leaning.
And then we know, we'll know when moments do it.
I apologize. Eighteen is for young guys, twenty two is.
Okay, that, that is a bigger difference. So I would be comfortable then maybe going to eighteen in kindergarten, but maybe not twenty two. Yeah, I just don't want it to be the goal to be contractual, because that's not necessarily what's best for the kids.
Right.
A lot of that tends to be the food, not the how many as well. We are so hung up in how many kids are in that class.
Some kids come for more.
But surprises that class.
Yep.
Makes such a big difference.
I hear you.
I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah. And, and I, I also, uh, my experience has been that we can get to that level of reduction in expense without laying people off. Uh, we may not replace every individual who retires, uh, or who resigns. We may reassign or realign, uh, some of the duties and responsibilities of our team members. But, um, if, if this level, we can make reductions and do it in such a way that it doesn't result in anyone losing their position. Now, to get to one point six, I can't say that. If we had to cut one point six, we would have to reduce some, some positions.
Do we have enough people at near retirement age that, uh, a bonus for retirement early would be beneficial?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, um.
I know you probably don't have this information on top of your head, but I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah, my experience has been in theory, that sounds like a, a great way. But to, a retirement decision is deeply personal.
Oh, sure.
And, um, while it, while we're trying to be very functional in, 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 uh, cognitive in terms of let's just, what can you do? To find that number that really, uh, causes someone to change their personal position is, is a shot in the dark. You just, you know, um.
I just know a lot of people who have retired early because they were offered a bonus. So I don't know the number. And I don't know what kind of research would go into that.
Yeah.
And if you don't offer a bonus, you'll never know anything. But, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, when I was looking at this, I, I want to say roughly thirty percent, just kind of based on the number of years of service. Their staff, where they fall in the grade, we have about thirty percent of our staff who potentially are eligible to retire.
We wouldn't necessarily want all thirty percent to retire, but that would be, we have not a good thing.
Yeah, that would be bad. But there, there are individuals who probably could make that decision while I'm, I'm ready to move on to the next chapter of my life.
Well, and I've known people who were literally waiting until they got a bonus to retire. They were like, I'm staying until they offer me something more, which isn't necessarily what we want to encourage either, but.
So to kind of circle back around, it's the yellow light that we're inclined to, to move towards, which is, you know, you're, you're raising that ten retirees, we replace all of them. We're going to have to take a little bit from the fund balance to make up the difference. Which, you know, that's, that's what, what it's there for. That's why we've been growing it all these years. And, uh, I hate to take from savings, but, you know, it's needed at this time, it seems like. And to me, we're headed in a good direction if we would do that. Just for that potential future, you know, what happens in the next year, what happens the next year? If it's continually going down, we're at, we're already in a spot where we can address that to some degree. So we're already moving in that direction, so to speak.
Yeah, it's easier to lose five pounds by making an adjustment to your diet than it is to lose fifty pounds. And I could cut my leg off and lose fifty pound trigger. It's going to limit my, uh, impact on other things, so.
Marty, do you know what our fund balance is, um, compared to other districts as far as percentage wise?
We're on the high side in the county.
Yeah.
Top twenty five percent, top five out of the twenty public schools.
And a lot of districts set a goal of having fifteen percent, then some say ten, lots say fifteen percent. So twenty five is, is, is a healthy balance. Um, I, I spoke to Matt Andres last week and they're going through kind of same stuff. They're at fifteen percent now. So he's probably sweating a little bit more than, than what we should be sweating. Um, but it's definitely, you need to be just talking about this.
Oh, sure. Better now than two years from now, you go, oh, by the way.
Right. And better now than just to not do anything, keep spending down, spending down, and then keep that trend and really be in trouble.
Yeah, we, we knew this day was going to come. It is coming a little bit sooner than anticipated due to the, the fault count. Um, so we just need to address it sooner than we initially planned on.
But we'll, we'll put together some, uh, some ideas. We'll work with building administrators and uh, other members of leadership and the building staffs to determine, yeah, how can we, how can we tighten things up a little bit? Can we sharpen the pencil?
Thank you. All right, that concludes the preliminary forecast. We'll move on to the annual school of choice resolution. Mr. Marty is, remains at the podium.
All right, so, uh, as you stated, this is a annual resolution related to school of choice. Uh, the first resolution is to opt out of section, uh, one O five so that we can participate in the Kent County Superintendent's School of Choice Collaborative, Collaborative, one O five C. So essentially that is all the, all twenty schools within Kent, uh, Kent ISD are arranged to a common set of, uh, rules to, uh, navigate school of choice within Kent County. Uh, the second portion of this resolution is to opt into section one O five C. So the difference is those are students, school of choice students coming from outside of Kent County. So think of Greenville, uh, Tri-County and New Waco School Districts. Uh, we are choosing to follow the state school of choice program. Any questions on this?
It'll be business as usual.
Right.
It's confusing every year.
So, I know.
Okay, whatever you said is the same as last year.
The resolution is as presented because we're opting in, we're opting out. Basically, we're doing everything on the resolution, correct?
As we have for the last, yeah. Last, his last word is.
So creative. Not, not your wording, Marty, maybe that was.
It's been more than two years. It's been confusing since I got on the board over ten years ago.
Yeah, I don't have any questions on the resolution. Do you have an idea of schools of choice numbers that come in?
Oh, maybe it's in the hundreds. I can give you a, a better number. Just curious. I want to say four, five hundred, five hundred.
And I, I guess the curiosity stems from as our numbers decline, is it, you know, are we seeing some of that school of choice kind of decline as well from others, from other areas? So.
A- a- as I mentioned, I need to sit down with Kami and really start digging into some of those numbers. Get a better understanding of what students did at the loss, at the best school of choice or in resident, in district students.
Yeah. Where are they going? Great.
Okay.
The mystery.
All right. Discussion item, I can't be oven request for proposal. Marty's presenting.
All right, so this, this is a, this first slide is just an updated excess fund balance, um, that we presented back in November, uh, where we currently stand. Uh, the high school serving lines has now been delivered and, and installed. The high school also received a county oven, uh, still estimated cost for universal free, uh, breakfast and covering the difference of, uh, between reduced lunch to make it free for those following families. The low bid for the county oven was forty four thousand eight eighty one. So we still actually have a, a little bit of additional, uh, fund balance to fully spend down our excess fund payments. Uh, the bid calculations, this is based on the bids that were received and opened on January twenty seventh. Our low bid came in at, as I mentioned, forty four thousand eight eighty one and twenty cents. And we recommend bringing it to the low bidder, Sam Talon's sons.
Have we purchased anything from them previously? Just curious. I, I'm not familiar with them, so.
No, I, I do not think we have. Any, any questions on the?
There are no questions.
All right, we'll be on it.
All right.
For action.
Then we move to the beach elementary design concept.
You might be pulling up that, uh, drawings, please. So we've been, uh, continuing to work with, uh, the team from Beach Elementary School, the G M B, the team from triangle construction to come up with this concept for beach. And, you know, if you recall some of the conversation we've had so far, um, it's a complex design because we're going to be building around an existing structure. So we can't just sweep that old building off the, off the, the face of the earth and then build a new structure, uh, where the old building sat. We've got to work with where the old building was. We've got to work with some unique, um, uh, water features, some drainage and some different elements just that are present on the, on the site itself. And so it's, it's been an interesting, uh, interesting process, uh, to say the least. But we've been, we've working and, and continuing to move forward with some, some different ideas. And, um, ultimately, uh, we're at a place where we feel good about, um, the, the, having a structure that matches pitch with, uh, what we need from an academic perspective, um, for the students at Beach Elementary School, but also that fits nicely on the site, um, that, uh, helps to support traffic flow, it makes it safe, uh, but also that fits, falls within the budget. And so we feel good about all of those factors. The big thing is, um, a couple of things that are different about this structure. Um, one of the things is that will be unique is that it's, it'll be, a section of the building will be a two story, uh, building. Uh, part of the academic wing will be two floors with classrooms up above and classrooms below. Uh, we're also maintaining some of the, uh, uh, structure at each. So the gymnasium, uh, some of those other features, the cafeteria, those things will remain in place as they currently are. So we'll be incorporating those features into the new design. But one of the, one of I think the, the neatest things that we're doing with Beach Elementary School is while it's currently serving our students two, three, our second and third graders, uh, realistically, there will be a point in time when our district grows again. And, uh, we need to add, uh, another elementary building to the, to the flock or to the fleet. Uh, and so, uh, in the design and development of the beach concept, we're building. Um, and so, uh, in the design and development of the Beach concept, we're building it as a K-five building. Uh, that will support four sections of, uh, classes kindergarten through fifth grade. Um, we're doing so because, uh, we just know that there will be a time when that's the space that we need there. Uh, there will be a time when the, uh, grow to the point of having to add another elementary school. Uh, and when we do that, uh, I, I can't say when it will happen. My recommendation, if we were doing it now, would be that we would add, uh, build an elementary school and then rather than having a K-one building, a two, three building, a four, five building, we have four buildings that were K-five buildings. And then distribute our students across those, those four spaces versus having a mega building with, you know, a thousand students, uh, kindergarten and first grade, a thousand students. Uh, second and third grade, a thousand students or eight hundred students, fourth and fifth grade. I would divide those groups up uh, in such a way that we can distribute those students better, um, ac- across four spaces versus doing it across, uh, three really, really large spaces. Um, so as we roll forward in the design playbook, as you'll see, um, the structure on the left, uh, is, would be the proposed, uh, first floor of the building. So you'll see, uh, in the center of that or on the right-hand side of that left-hand image, you'll see the gymnasium, you'll see the cafeteria, you'll see some of those spaces, the classrooms. Uh, just to the right of that, uh, gymnasium and cafeteria space, those classrooms would be designed to be kindergarten classrooms or lower out classrooms. So they would have a bathroom, they would be plowed and, uh, have features that would be supportive of, like, uh, a kindergarten, uh, learning space. Um, so then the, the angled portion on the left-hand side of the, uh, drawing, uh, that would be the first floor of the academic wing. So you'll see that there are, um, in, uh, uh, floor of classrooms, um, down that wing, uh, that, that angle off kind of to the, uh, upper left-hand corner. Then the drawing on the, uh, right-hand side of the images you see it would be what you're seeing. That would be the second floor of the building. Um, and so we really tried to be again strategic. When you think about a four-section building, ideally, you, uh, would have four classes, four groups of fifth graders, four, uh, classes, fourth graders, four thirds, four seconds, four firsts. So if you'll notice, uh, we've got, uh, nine classrooms on that second floor. Uh, so that would be supportive of two grades. So, you know, four sections of fifth grade, four sections of fourth grade. There's a resource room, uh, space up there for some additional supports. So the way we are laying the space out, we're really again trying to project and, uh, as to how we can allocate and utilize that building, um, to maximize its, its efficiency and effectiveness as a K-five building, but it'll also function, uh, really nicely as a, as a two, three building in the interim. So the next, uh, drawing is, uh, or the next picture, um, is just to get a highlight of that first floor, so expanded view. You'll see, uh, the, uh, the curved, uh, drop-off area for, uh, student drop-off and pickup on the south or on the, the bottom portion of the picture. Um, that's the area in which there will be paid access for deliveries. Um, it will not be, uh, for parent, uh, drop-off or parent pickup, nor would be for staff parking. Uh, staff parking will be, uh, as you're seeing it, to the right of the drop-off loop. Uh, so we really wanna separate pedestrian traffic from, uh, from regular drop-off and pickup traffic uh, to the site to increase, uh, safety. So if you'll bounce to the next, uh, picture, again, it's just the expanded view of that second floor of the building. Uh, and I think that was it for the overall workup plans. So just super preliminary. The next bundle of, um, documents that are contained in Board Book are the actual, um, just some, uh, renderings of what the, what the building will look like. Just to kind of give you an idea of, wow, okay, what would this space, uh, maybe look like? Uh, and so, uh, this is where it gets exciting because it goes from kind of visual or from a concept to, uh, what the space may look like. So, um, uh, this is what it would look like on a really foggy day. Uh, maybe a heavy snow day, uh, where you don't, uh, you can't, uh, see through to the, the building. Um, I'm not sure what that knot is in the middle of the snowy, uh, forecast.
Are you proposing a circular?
Yeah, just a, just a dotted building, yeah.
Mine took a long time to open too, so don't.
It's very, uh, very high res graphics, so if you, when you go in. Um, so that, that would be a picture of, uh, people lovingly, uh, entering the front of the building, um, from the, from the parent drop-off pickup. Uh, again, that would be, that's the, uh, image of the building from the backside of the building. So that would be the kind of student pathway, a switcher transitioning over from the, the bus drop-off. Um, the next image is that, um, the academic wing that's extending out kind of to the northwest. So as we're looking at it, so showing the two levels of, uh, of the building there. Um, and then the next rendering is kind of a, an overview, uh, showing like if we were in a, uh, unidentified flying object over cedar trails. Uh, that would be the, uh, the visual that we would have. Uh, and then the next one is if we were, uh, in an unidentified flying object, uh, hovering somewhere over the administration building, uh, and that would be the view that we would see, uh, looking down at Beach from the backside. So this would, this would really be the face of the building, uh, for the bulk of our, uh, bulk of our guests who were, uh, uh, coming to, to Beach, um. Yeah.
So while we're looking at this view, Cedar Trails is over on the right?
Cedar Trails is going to be behind.
Behind, um, um, right.
Yeah. Uh, well, really kind of straight behind.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, we'll see kind of that tree line area. That's currently where, um, uh, that's currently where the, the drainage, uh, water flows. Yeah.
Where will the playground be?
Uh, playground will be over in that section on the, uh, left-hand side.
That's not where it's at right now, correct?
Uh, so it'll be, yeah, it'll be moved back around a little bit from where it currently sits. So, yeah, I think the mass point, um, Beach would, or excuse me, uh, Cedar Trails would be to the left of, or to the right of center. But behind the building. And then Cedar View would be to the left of center, uh, over in that area.
So that drive, that circular drive right there. Is that the existing gym or the new gym? I'm just trying to, that's existing?
Yeah, there won't be a new gym.
Right.
Yeah, existing gym, existing cafeteria. Where the, where this drive is, is where the current buildings.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna be an interesting, it's gonna be an interesting.
It makes sense.
We're gonna have to carve off some corners of the existing building in order to, to construct new spaces. So we'll have to, you know, move some, some, some classrooms that are currently being occupied so that we can, we'll demo those to build new.
But for me, I like the idea of having parts of it. I think this is one of the oldest buildings on campus. So keeping some of that heritage.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's fun, it's unique, you know, it's something that we can tell the kids about. Hey, this, uh, this gym has been yours since whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, sixties. How old it is, but, um. Yeah, I, I like the combination of old and new, so it's good.
Yeah, and I just really appreciate the forward thinking as well and really setting us up for some flexibility and growth. I just, I think that's very wise.
Yeah, the one drawback that I see, um, at this point is there will be a lot of jealous people who are in other buildings because of something where it might be.
Gym, or one.
Is there space, uh, for a future library?
So there is, uh, we've got a, um, there is a space, um, that's kind of a large open space that could be a library at some point in time. You know, we're kind of designated it, designated it as a kind of a utility learning space or a multi-purpose learning space. Um. If that's, if that was the direction that we were going to go.
I'm hopeful that schools are gonna bring back school libraries, so I just wanna make sure there's room for it when it happens, yeah.
Do you have it designated as reading center?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it's a really a cool, like, the, the visuals from within that area um, will be, will be pretty special. Like, it'll be a me, student space.
Any questions?
Right, we'll keep you in the loop.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, moving on, it brings us to public comment, and this is the time that you can address the board for three minutes. Do we have any fingers for public comments? Maybe none, well, we'll move on. On, yes, to, our action items of seeking. And. Okay. First up, we have the E-Wright Category Two Request for Proposal. We have the RFP out, and I would entertain a motion for as presented with the low bid.
So moved, support.
Just to clarify, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Here you go, say.
I was, I was gonna say, yes, discussion, so if you have the number, it's gonna be great.
Yep, uh, I believe it was Vector, is that the company's name? Something with a B.
Vector Tech.
Vector Tech, there we go. And hundred twelve, five seventy-one is the total, subsides.
That is the total for all.
For all of us, and then we will get reimbursed seventy percent of that, which would be, uh, make drop our total to thirty-three thousand seven seventy-one.
Thirty-two cents.
Thirty-two cents. Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Having none. Trusty Bowser?
Yes.
Trusty Patton?
Yes.
Trusty Vater Hyde?
Yes.
Trusty Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Next, we have a force budget amendment one as presented. I would entertain a motion.
So moved, support.
A discussion. Having none, Trusty Bowser?
Yes.
Trusty Patton?
Yes.
Trusty Vater Hyde?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item C, Annual Schools of Choice Resolution. I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved, support.
A discussion. Having none, Trusty Bowser?
Yes.
Trusty Patton?
Yes.
Trusty Vater Hyde?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. Action item D, Combi Oven Purchase Recommendation as presented with a low bid of forty-four eight eight one point two one. I'll entertain a motion as presented. So moved, support. A discussion?
Just, I didn't ask the question before, but I kind of wrote the answer, but just wanted to make it generally known. This fund balance that we have to spend for food service is very much separate than what we've been talking about with the, with the budget, correct?
And it is that M D requirement that we, if we get to a certain level of fund balance, that we have to spend it down. We have to invest it back into the food service program.
Sure, and that's why we looked at doing the combi oven. And we're spending funds potentially for that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll call roll. Trusty Bowser?
Yes.
Trusty Patton?
Yes.
Trusty Vater Hyde?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, we're getting a new combi oven. Last action item for this evening is the reaffirmation of the in-person continuity of services plan in ninety-eight C. I'll entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
Again, this change was just adding or switching.
Yes, uh, just adding Trusty Patton or Trusty Vater Hyde.
Great.
You're welcome. Alright, here we go. Trusty Bowser?
Yes.
Trusty Patton?
I don't know.
Yes.
Trusty Vater Hyde?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
President Reed, yes, motion carries. That brings us to the communication portion of the, um, evening. And you're up to date with everything, um, that I've received except one thing, um, I did have a mom reach out to me. It was in my board email. But basically, it was, I ended up calling her and it was just an encouragement to work with the teacher and the principal, and she found a, um, positive outcome. So it wasn't, it didn't end up being a board.
Yeah, I will say as well as your eyes are the most.
Proven transport list. Alright, so our next meeting is February twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
We'll plan for that. We have some more data coming, and so with that, we'll stay in the journey with no more business concerns at eight fifty-two.